It is 6:30 on October 24th and we are meeting in the Dover Sherborne Middle School Library. Before I read the preamble, are there any community comments? Doesn't seem like it. Okay. Our first item on the agenda is the superintendent comments. Beth, would you like to start?
Sure. Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just some updates from my perspective. Now that we are a month into school, well, more than a month into school, it's kind of old news that we had open houses because they're the last committee to meet with in this cycle. But many thanks to the educators and Dr. Reinem and Mr. Carnes for holding an open house for our educators. And as we continue to work on communication and transparency with our community, we're continuing to think about how we use these opportunities where we have a captive audience of parents and caregivers to share the information that are repeating going on in our schools. So Challenge Success, as you know, we're celebrating our 10th year as a district with Challenge Success and they had their East Coast Conference two weeks ago. It was at Bentley University and there were several workshops, both Friday and Saturday for groups to go to. We sent a group of roughly 10 Dover Sherborne representatives and it was parents, teachers, administrators, and a student. It was great to kind of revisit the roots as we, you know, circle back and think about who we are as a district. And myself and Chloe Legere, who's a senior, had an opportunity to speak on a panel, given that we were the first coast, first school in the East Coast to adopt Challenge Success. We got to talk about the work that we've done in the last 10 years and Chloe got to talk about the impact it had on students positively in terms of where she understands the district was and what she's experiencing now. Going back to our roots again and making sure that for any of our older parents who need a refresher on who we are as a district or any of our new parents who either came during the pandemic and didn't have a chance to really dig in or after the pandemic, we have a number of events lined up in the next several months. So Challenge Success, like the 101 workshop, we're holding on November 8th at 6:30 in Mudge. It's also going to be live streamed for folks who can't come. And thanks to Mr. Conklin, we're offering childcare as well. So that families who can, need to bring their kiddos, can bring their kiddos and still be able to focus on the presentation. That is kind of the secondary version of their, their overall kind of philosophy and approach to student belonging and engagement. The elementary version is called the Well Balanced Child and that is going to be held on January 9th at 6:30 PM on Zoom. So that parents can log in with their younger kids, you know, in the background and be able to catch that information. Denny and I will be holding a superintendent state of the district presentation in January. We'll talk about the strategic plan, our goals, progress on our goals, our vision for the district over the next five years, as well as some of the data of where we are and where we'd like to go. Restorative practices is one of those pieces left over from last year when we had the community forums. It's something that people were very interested in learning more about. So we have training going on with our principals, assistant principals, and guidance counselors this year and kind of dipping our toe into looking at incidents as they happen and providing restorative options, learning options, learning moments for our kids. So we'd love to give an update to the community about what restorative practices are all about and how they're playing out in the buildings. And then going back to the Portrait of a Graduate, which is of course our North Star and our vision for all kids as they progress through the schools. Two of the really powerful events that we had in 2019, when we had the Academic Innovation Committee create the Portrait of Graduate, where we had an industry panel and a college panel. So the industry panel is when we ask community members, parents, caregivers, to come from a variety of different fields and talk about kind of where they see their field heading in the next 10 to 20 years and what skills they think that new employees are going to need. And then we have the college panel, similarly where we have representatives, both professors and admissions folks from small, medium, large colleges, rural, urban, come and talk about kind of the changing landscape of college admissions and what they're looking for from our students as our students need to stand out from the pack and show the skills that make them different from every other student has a 4.0 and captain of three teams.
All right, pause that for one second. Do we need someone to take notes? It's sensible. It's not here.
Oh, no, she takes it from the tape.
Oh, wonderful.
Good news there.
We actually have a paid person who does that.
Oh, fantastic. Okay. But thank you for checking. Okay. And then the calendar task force and goalie is your representative on the calendar task force. Just an update here. So we've had four meetings so far and we're hoping that on January 30th, when the three school committees come together, that we'll have some proposals for you to consider for next year's calendar. At this point, you saw the community survey go out. We had an unprecedented 850 replies from students, families, and educators. And so at our last meeting on October 4th, we were here, we spread out, we went through all of the different stakeholder feedback to see what people were thinking, feeling, what their needs and accommodations were in terms of holidays. At that point, we realized there was more research that we needed to do. So we're doing that right now in anticipation of our meeting on November 1st, where we're going to kind of come back together and hopefully lay out some proposals, send them out to the community for feedback, come back together one more time, figure out where we stand in terms of those proposals, and then get them ready to share with you. So it continues. And lastly, just in terms of my professional growth, I continue to be part of the new superintendent induction program. So I'm in year two of a three-year program. I continue to meet with my coach, John Sills, weekly and he's fabulous. We have four in-person sessions for full days. We've already had one of those and five remote mornings where we gather together as a year-two cohort. In addition to that, I'm partaking in an optional professional development opportunity. So the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, MAS, which also runs the new superintendent induction program, is also focused very much on DEI work. And their DEI work is called READY. So it's Racial Equity Diversity and Inclusion Series. And I am part of the Foundations Two course this year. So we're reading a book called Immunity to Change and how, when you're trying to steer a cargo ship, you have to steer it very slowly, but also recognize that every individual has certain beliefs and certain values. And those play out in terms of the larger culture and environment. So when you have a fishbowl and you're trying to get all the fish to kind of change direction and you have to understand each fish is different and they're breathing the same air, how do you do that? And it's not easy. But it's, it's great so far. We are each having an opportunity in our small groups, we're a group of eight, we have four groups of eight, bringing case studies that we're working on this year of real scenarios within our districts where we're trying to make change and some of the difficulties and challenges that we're facing and learning from each other as we go. So that's my update. I'm happy to take any questions before we turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Conklin.
One small question. The restorative practices, what does that entail? Like just a few sentences about what that means.
If you think about the word discipline, right, you know, the root of that means learning. And so, you know, if a child doesn't bring their homework or, you know, pushes someone on the playground, you can give them detention. But are they really actually learning from that? Probably not. It's much more powerful when someone pushes a peer on the playground to have them sit down together and talk about, you know, how did that feel? Why did this happen? How can we not engage in that behavior moving forward? So it's really, it's about learning and repairing relationships that might be broken when incidents happen.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I was going in a completely different direction. That's great.
Or like when you get to a larger incident where a child may be traditionally suspended, yes, staying home from school, I don't know if that's really a punishment. But instead having to sit down and process and learn from the, the situation is kind of really what we want for kids.
Being integrated into all school levels or there's just a?
Slowly. The middle school, I would say, is the kind of the farthest along, just because they've had the most training at the administrative level. And the others are kind of learning as they go. And there's some things where there's both, you know, it's not a one or, there's the traditional discipline and the restorative practice.
It's another tool in your toolbox.
Exactly.
It's really special. It gives the opportunity to like actually understand the impact of maybe poor choice you made instead of just like suffering a consequence, like you get to learn from what you did and then try and repair it, which is really nice.
Some more to come on that.
Thank you. Denny, would you like to share next?
Sure. All right. So just some updates on things that I've been working on over the past few months. So I've been trying to meet with the PLC leaders at the elementary level. So there's the grade level. Teachers that are part of professional learning communities that are teacher leaders at each grade level. So Dr. Reinem and Mr. Carnes meet with them once a month and they go through major initiatives, planning, professional development together. So I've been trying to make sure that they're meeting with the teacher leaders and seeing how we can support them in their teaching and learning. One of my own goals for this year is to better understand the way that data is being used to make decisions about students. So at the elementary level, as part of our multi-tiered systems of support, we have data team meetings where teachers, coaches, interventionists, counselors sit down and they go through information about the student. And then this is used to shape students and if they're going to need any interventions, shape what they're going to be spending their time on during their win blocks, their what I need timeframes. So I've just been attending some of those meetings, trying to get a better feel for what the process looks like. Specifically, what are the data points that we're using to make decisions about our students? And then the best part of the past couple of months, I don't know why I didn't do this last year, but I've been going into classrooms as the mystery reader, which has been fantastic. Today I was in the classroom and I read a book about why hamsters make bad roommates, which was just a very, very adorable book about friendship and compromise. So that's been a lovely way to get into classrooms and to be interacting with students. One of the things that's really exciting for the whole district as a whole is our ideas course that we're offering. So you might remember that when we were doing our negotiations for the DSCA contract, any staff that were hired starting this year are required to, within their first three years in the district, take a class on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we were able to partner with the organization Ideas, which is part of the Massachusetts Association for School Superintendents. We're offering just a Dover Sherborne cohort of that course. So they kicked off a couple of weeks ago in person and now they have a series of 10 sessions that are being held on Zoom. They'll meet together in person for a final one. But we had about 21 teachers sign up for that. I'd say probably six or seven of them are first-year teachers, but the rest of them are veteran teachers that felt like this would be a great opportunity to talk about these ideas around equity and anti-racism within the Dover Sherborne community. So we're hoping to offer that class every fall. I'm just very, very happy with the amount of people that were interested in this in our first run. Right now, in the world of teacher evaluation, we are in goal-setting season. So teachers have a chance to reflect upon their practices and set two goals for the year. One is the student learning goal, which is something that a teacher is going to do in terms of their practice. That's going to have a, hopefully positive impact on student learning. The other is a professional practice goal. So that could be something related to their own professional development and growth, which we also hope is going to lead to better outcomes for our students. So at Chicaring, a couple of the sample goals that we saw, some of the teachers are doing this common student learning goal around creating more real-world applications for content, specifically thinking about universal design for learning and how we can give our students greater choice in what they're learning and a greater voice in what they're learning. And January and February, we're going to be having Kay Novak come and work with both Pine Hill and Chicaring to talk more about universal design for learning. So teachers have laid out some benchmarks and some measures for that over the year. Another sample professional practice goal is around responsive classroom and our positive behavioral interventions and supports. Just as a refresher, Responsive Classroom is the program that we use to build community within the classroom, within the school. Part of Responsive Classroom is morning meeting and the morning message that a teacher shares. It's about reinforcing positive behaviors. So you'll often hear the phrases, this is an expected behavior or an unexpected behavior. So it's part of the professional practice goal is integrating this more and doing it with a bit more fidelity. Thinking about ways that we can build in social emotional connections in our morning meetings. So that's a professional practice goal that a lot of teachers are working on. Some other teachers have goals around the math pilot, the SEL pilot, the new IEP that's rolling out, as well as the nine best practices that we started the year with as well. So their goals vary, but this is kind of what the majority of them fall under.
Before you move on, so fantastic, you know, that we're weaving in these bigger principles into our daily practices. As a new committee member, can you talk to me a little bit about how the teachers learn about these new practices? How do they get coached along the way? It's one thing to put it in a goal. It's another thing to really get the support they need to be successful.
With the sample professional practice goal in terms of responsive classroom, we're making sure that every teacher in the building has been trained with the Responsive Classroom organization. So we've set aside PD funds. So by the end of this year, we'll have our new staff, some of our existing staff that haven't had that PD are going to take part in that PD. This is another place where our school counselors and our social emotional learning coach are also working with teachers to help give them the resources and the ideas. Kind of, we've had cases where our SEL coach has gotten in and has modeled what an effective morning meeting looks like for teachers, especially for some of our new staff, so they can see what an effective morning meeting might look like. In terms of the student learning goal, we're trying to build in experiences throughout the year in kind of in-district professional development. So early release time, the upcoming November 27th full day professional development experience where teachers can find more strategies and get the tools that they need to create more of these real-world contexts, figure out ways for students to apply their skills more. A lot of that is being done through the best practices and the ways that our grade level teams are meeting to talk about and share and collaborate with some of the things that they do already around those best practices. And then we're going to, in January, January and February, have our early release days with Kitty Novak, where she'll be coming in and working with both of the elementary schools around the UDL principals. So I think part of what we do when we have, every time a teacher sets these goals, they have a meeting with their evaluator to talk over the goals. And part of that is thinking about how teachers are going to measure the goals and for the evaluators to offer the supports, like what can the district do to help support you in this? So it doesn't fall on like the teacher asks you this, 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 and this, but what are ways that me as the principal or me as the specialty coordinator can help you get to these goals?
So that there's a feedback loop. So the teachers are also able to say, here, this is what I need and, and there's some correlation with the all-district training, et cetera.
Definitely.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And I feel.
I was just going to follow. Are there defined measures to achieve these goals? I mean, these goals here are very kind of lofty. They're not really specific. Is part of the expectation that they're going to set a certain standard for achieving?
So they said, set benchmarks, which are kind of by this time period, I'm going to implement this or do this in the classroom. And they also set measurements for how they're actually going to track this. That's probably the most important with the student learning goal because you're trying to see and measure if it's having an impact on student learning. In some cases, for student learning goals, that can be pre-surveys and post-surveys, student attitude surveys. It could be looking at the number of interventions that students have within a class and trying to decrease the amount of students that receive interventions. It could be a teacher setting out a specific goal underneath this that says, for every unit that I teach in social studies, there's going to be an authentic real-world project that I'm going to implement. Because at the end of the year, the teachers meet with their evaluators and have to show, they submit evidence and have discussions with their evaluator about how they've actually measured these goals throughout the year.
Wonderful.
Of course.
So you'll see the through line between the district goals, my goals, the school improvement goals, and then the teacher goals. So basically what we, we recommend to teachers is saying, this is what we as a district and we as a school are working on. This is how we're going to be using our professional development time, how we're going to be using our department time. So you're going to be doing this work anyway, so it would make sense to set a goal around it.
You're flowing it down.
Exactly. And there are some teachers who then say, I'm happy to participate in the building-based PD and learn from that and integrate that new information into my classroom. And I'm also interested in this kind of side project. And sometimes they'll set a goal that doesn't have to do with that, but it's something that they feel like they want to work on.
So there's the goals, because it's goal season. We are planning in the process for planning for the November 27th Professional Development Day. So the theme of that day, kind of as Superintendent McCoy just referenced, how these things all connect and intertwine, is about student ownership of learning and empowering our students to take ownership of their own learning. So we're in the beginning processes of this planning right now, but right now it looks like we're going to have a keynote in the morning for the whole district with AJ Giuliani talking about student engagement, thinking about how, kind of similar to the themes that Superintendent McCoy laid out at our opening day, how technology is changing, what that means for how our education systems need to become more innovative and adapt and change. I think he's going to weave in some elements of AI and then also talk about this very real thing of how do we hit all the standards and get through the content while at the same time creating project-based learning experiences for students? Because I think for some teachers, they understand all the content that needs to get through. And how can I still cover all that content and have, you know, build in this project that's going to take three weeks? So we're hoping that he's going to give teachers some tools that they can create projects and see how all of these things can flow together nicely rather than sometimes feel like we might be competing for time. Teachers are going to have an opportunity to select some workshops in the morning that they can go to. So we have some workshops on using AI in the classroom, even at the elementary level. We have some workshops on project-based learning. Challenge Success is going to be doing two workshops, one on rethinking homework and another on thinking about different types of assessments that we can offer teachers or offer students. Then at the elementary level, both elementary schools are going to work together for the afternoon. So our grades K through two teachers are going to be working on decodable text and thinking about reading. And our grades three through five teachers are going to be thinking about ways to create more student engagement during the mini lesson part of their overall lessons that they do with students. What I am excited about for those afternoon sessions is that our coaches are going to be leading those sessions. So it's not like we're like bringing in outside people for that, but we're utilizing the talent that we have within the district already. The final thing I wanted to touch upon is our SEL pilot. So at the last time we met, I shared some more information about the math pilot. Also going on at the same time is a social emotional learning pilot with the Fly5 curriculum. This just gives a little background on the Fly5 pilot. So what is Fly5? It's a SEL curriculum that focuses on developing student skills of cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. You might be wondering, why did we choose Fly5 as the curriculum to pilot? The big, big reason is because it is aligned and integrated with Responsive Classroom, which I talked about earlier. So we took our existing systems and community building and decided that this would make the most sense because it uses the same language and the common vocabulary that would be familiar to both teachers and students. It's aligned with Castle standards. What does our pilot entail? So at least one teacher per grade is piloting three of the different Fly5 units in their classrooms. So that kind of becomes two lessons a week. And Chicaring and Pine Hill teachers are meeting with the SEL coach to debrief those lessons, to get feedback, give feedback about the curriculum and how it's going. Some of these lessons are more kind of like standalone pieces. Others are things that have been integrated through morning meeting or through ELA or through social studies. Because the goal is that social emotional learning isn't something that is its own thing, but that it is something that is just part of the overall school day. So that if you're reading a story, you can talk about ideas of empathy. If you're doing a group work project in social studies, you can be talking about ways to collaborate and cooperate with each other and listen to each other. How are we going to measure the effectiveness of this pilot? So we've been doing lots of walkers and observations of the curriculum in action. Teachers are giving their feedback. We're asking students who are part of these classes to give their feedback. We're also looking at the number of students that require SEL interventions and see if we notice any changes based upon it. So potentially, we could be coming before school committee sometime in the spring, saying that this is our recommendation based on these measures as to why we think that the school committee should adopt, formally adopt this curriculum in the future. But similar to what I mentioned with the math pilot, we're going to let the process play out and then see where we get. Again, we might need a little bit more time to pilot or we might feel really ready to jump in with this. But the feedback so far from teachers has been really, really positive. If you go to the Fly5 website, they have sample lessons if you want to learn more about the curriculum. But for people who might be concerned about, you know, what does SEL time look like? These are lessons about teamwork. There's a lesson on like good sportsmanship. So it's not necessarily, sometimes you go, think of SEL as this like detail, I'm going to talk about my feelings and dissect all these things. But it's kind of these general life lessons that it's giving students and helping them learn how to work together in a community more and think about individual and group responsibility.
Do you have any questions? Thanks, Denny. Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That under discussion items, we have the October enrollment report. If we do that now, then we can turn it over to John for the next several items.
Oh, perfect. That works. So Beth, would you like to do the?
The next slide. So every October, we take a snapshot of our enrollment and we share it with you. And it's primarily for the Department of Education because they will use this to set our achievement and assessment benchmarks for the next year, as well as help determine grants and funding that comes to the school. So as of October 1st, pre-K to grade five, we had 499 students at Chicaring, which is within the normal range of students that we, we normally educate. This year, we thought it would be interesting just to kind of look at the demographics with, at Chicaring. We did this for all four of our schools. So next slide, Denny. So we have different subgroups of students on the left and then you have 2023. So the now and how many students we have in each of those subgroups. Then you have 2018, which was five years ago, and 2013, which was 10 years ago. So you can see trends. What's interesting is that Chicaring, the number of English language learners has decreased, which is the opposite of what we're seeing happen at the other schools. So, you know, I'm sure there's a story behind that. Special education has, you know, increased a little bit in the last five years. You know, part of that is the pandemic and, and meeting the needs of our students, but also works, we're working proactively to keep our students in district and to educate them here with their neighbors and their peers. So you're going to see that number go up because we're not sending them to out-of-district placements. You'll see the number of out-of-district placements as a district, this is not just Chicaring, but the number of students K to 12 that we're sending out of district has certainly decreased over time. And five years ago, we had 51, now we're down to 34. So we are keeping them in district and, and educating our own students with their own peers. Otherwise, trends in demographics doesn't really fluctuate much. We've seen a little bit of an increase in our multiracial students. But you'll see in a 10-year period, we've gone from 83% of our population being white to 73%. So seeing some expanding of our, our subgroups and demographics here at Chicaring. And we're seeing the same at the middle and high school. Just interesting to kind of see trends.
Yeah, that is helpful. The class size, the slide before that had the class sizes, is that, that's the generally? Yeah, does that seem like following a pattern, like?
Yeah, we've seen this across all three districts. Our projections, we actually had sort of some class sizes decrease versus increasing. We usually see a little bit of a, especially in K5, like it grows right as people move in. But we're seeing some grades actually went below, they declined versus increasing. So we are seeing a little bit of a different type of year. So when we do the projections for your budget, we do a three-year projection and a one-year. So it'd be interesting, you can see the one-year, it's going to, it's going to look a little different than sort of the three-year average. And that's where it just plays into us where we're looking, where we've got sort of, we're on the cusp of needing like four or five sections. Or what's going to happen? Are we going to grow or are we going to decrease this year? So that's where we sort of have to just sometimes make our best estimate and see where we roll. But definitely seen not an increase in the grades, but a decrease in some grades. So some grades were a little bit lower than we anticipated because we didn't see the growth.
Yeah. So kindergarten also is quite small, 62 students. But looking at the higher grades, we were able to, students that we had in districts that perhaps left. We, we've been doing exit surveys and interviews with those families. So we've been tracking why they're leaving. And, you know, it's just a fluke that there's been lots of families that have moved. It's not necessarily choosing a private or propio school, it's that they've moved to, you know, Needham or they've moved to like Texas or they've moved to Dubai.
Yeah. Yeah. But you might see those families return also, right?
Exactly.
Well, the Dubai example.
Maybe not.
I don't know.
Temporary assignments.
Yeah. I think you said this, but the trend, the trend is pretty consistent over time. Like, are you expecting an, an increase or how does this relate to?
I think that the one thing that we can't really trend is our kindergarten class. Because that's just a nature, we have a small town, right? So we, we could have 75 and we could have 62. So we usually get the census from the town, just so we have an idea of how many four-year-olds or, you know, five-year-olds that we have going into kindergarten. And then we do look at that number to say, okay, so many of them will come, some will hold back, some will. And then we do look at that number to say, okay, so many of them will come, some will hold back, some will not come here. So we have a formula that we look at with just kindergarten. But that sort of sets the growth, right, for the next five years of what the starting number is. But normally we see continued growth from K to five in the cohorts as they move up. Like, we're always picking up some. So this is the first year, I think, in a while that I've seen where we haven't picked up. We've actually gone below what we had, or we've stayed the same.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
That is helpful.
Yeah.
But I also, I'm encouraged that you're also, you're doing exit interviews.
Yeah. So we're tracking where the kids go.
Any other questions?
Because you can see the difference, just like you have got a grade that's got sixty-six and then the grade right next to it's ninety-six. That's the craziness that sometimes plays into a small town, you just don't even out.
This is probably a question for Deb, but is that challenging for the school to be able? You have to flex pretty hard between grades, like teachers.
Sometimes you have to move a section up.
Yeah.
Sometimes you need three sections, sometimes you need four sections. So you have teachers moving.
Yeah.
Is that?
Chicaring's been pretty lucky, but I will say Pine Hill, that happens a lot. Like, they'll go three, four, and then sometimes there's a cohort where that section has to keep moving up with them. So it's a moving of teachers around. Chicaring traditionally has been pretty, the four, like, you know, four is low, five is our norm. And so sometimes the cohort, well, definitely we're going to have some cohorts that move, but pretty much we can stay the same. We're not changing a lot. But we're, we usually, we don't have, I've always noticed that Dover doesn't have as many discrepancies between the cohorts. We're starting to see a little bit more of that now, where there's like a wide difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's also out-of-district placements where students are, you know, we can't meet their needs so that they leave. We've also seen and heard from real estate agents, there's not a lot of supply right now. So there's not a lot of new houses for new families to come in with their kiddos. And we'll also, you know, given that we've been working on their special education programming in district, there are some that are specific that we house just at Pine Hill or just at Chicaring. So we've actually recently had a few students leave Chicaring to go to Pine Hill to take advantage of that program. So we will see the reduction there too.
But to remember that we did add a second classroom for preschool.
Right.
Right.
So the numbers prove that that was.
Yeah. Okay, next on our agenda, we'll go back and do, Donna, if you want to do the warrant report and the?
The monthly report?
Yep. And then the school committee fiscal year twenty-five budget guidance.
We're done with public comment.
Yeah. Yeah, but isn't it an open meeting?
But it's live streamed.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
We tried to delineate that on the, the agenda, but maybe we need to be more clear. Community comment is just community comment.
Right, exactly. And then it's live streamed on Dover Cable.
Great, great.
Okay, so that you have your monthly standard report for warrants that have been approved since you last met. And again, we delineate those by what funding source they are. So you've got your general out-of-district, your special education grants, food service. We still have some ESSER grants. And then general school actually is your in-district operating cost. Always happy to answer any questions about those or if you're ever interested in coming and seeing sort of the backup. We keep the copies at central office and Liz continuing to frequent town hall to sign the warrants every two weeks. Moving on to your monthly report, so this is our first snapshot of fiscal year twenty-four. Because if you remember, like, I guess I presented, I wasn't here in September, but you saw your wrap-up report for fiscal year twenty-three in September. So this is our first look at twenty-four. I have provided some information about some changes in salaries that are impacting your status of appropriations, trying to sort of explain some of the variances that you'll see because there are some swings, some large swings there here and there. So in educators' classrooms, really what you're seeing there is a reflection of a full year leave of absence. So we have a staff member who's on a full year leave of absence being filled with a long-term sub, which is at a much lower rate than the position that we're holding for that individual. Other than that, we didn't see much fluctuation post-budget in our educator classroom. On our special education side, and we have been talking about this a little bit, you'll see that number is a little bit larger. We have formally added a point eight FTE speech language pathologist into the contract. So they're a formal employee. Prior to that, we had a consultant or a special outside service person who was sort of fulfilling our needs. It had grown to a point where, and the future looked like that was going to continue, that we actually made it a regular position. So there is some savings in the expenditure line item where we used to pay that contract to service person that will offset some of the salary increases. In addition, we did the same thing with our physical therapist. We have a physical therapist who services all of our schools. And based on sort of the consistency of the need for that position, we also added that to the contract. And Chicaring's picking up point three-five of that position. So same thing, a lot of that is just sort of moving sort of outside service contracts up to the salary line item that's generating a big chunk of that negative variance. In addition, there were several post-budget staffing changes, quite a few actually. And so salaries that we budgeted in March and that cohort of educators is not the same cohort that we have. And therefore there were some savings and some extra costs depending on the hiring market and who, who was selected to fill those positions. So there's a lot going on in that line item, but hopefully we've explained a little bit of that. In addition, as Beth just mentioned, we're seeing some savings in educational assistance because we did have some students in Chicaring who, post-budget, it was determined that they could be better served at Pine Hill. And so some of this personnel associated with those students were no longer needed at Chicaring. And so that's where you're seeing sort of a large variance in educational assistance. There were several of those positions that we, you're actually seeing the cost for those services down in your out-of-district because they're now over at Pine Hill having the one-to-one versus in district having the one-to-one. So that's sort of things that just happen when you finalize our budget in March and things take place. And this is some of the shakeout that you'll see in the financials.
How does that work? Does the Sherburne town have to pay for that or do we give some sort of a?
So the school, they have a non-resident tuition fund because they've actually had programs that have accepted Chicaring students in the past. So their school committee actually on an annual basis approves a per pupil cost that's assessed to the students that we, that you guys send over there. In addition to any additional services that that student needs is charged back to Dover.
It is, okay.
Yes. So you're paying fully for the student being there.
Just not showing up in.
Exactly. It's going to be in your out-of-district.
Yep.
It's going to be in your out-of-district.
Understood.
Yeah.
So that educational assistant moved from your employee line to your out-of-district.
Out-of-district, got it.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah. It works over in Pine Hill.
I'm there. I got you. Thank you.
Yeah. And that's if you were, right, so that's just the, that's sort of the, one of the nuances of us being three districts, but acting like why go one? It becomes an out-of-district versus in any other district, it would just be in district. You might just go to a different school.
Right, right.
Adds a little excitement here for us. And then I just wanted to highlight that, you know, custodial overtime and substitute costs, you'll see variances and positive variances there, but they will decrease as those costs are incurred, as the time goes on, as the custodians work overtime is needed for the, for the winter, for snow removal or other needs. And then obviously our substitutes, as we continue the year, when we call in substitutes, that's when that expense is being incurred. We'll keep you updated on any other staffing changes that happen as the year progresses. On the expenditure side, luckily there's no material variances to talk about right now. You'll see plenty of variances, but that's because we're only in October of the school year and we have much of the year still to progress and purchase what we need and take care of the building as we need it. The out-of-district is where we sort of have the bigger piece to talk about tonight. We have, currently have twenty-four placements. That is six more than we had budgeted back in March. So obviously that's going to drive up our cost. In addition, we had some changes in our placements that have also driven up the cost. So I tried to show you the ins and outs of, so the six additional placements comprised about six hundred and ten thousand dollars. Changes in placement was about four hundred and fifty thousand. But we did have in all that equation, two placements that we thought that were, that actually the students left the district or graduated early. So there was a little bit of savings of a hundred and forty-five. But if you think about that, we really had eight more than budgeted if we hadn't had those two students actually leave or graduate early. So it's a very volatile population and both, we're seeing sort of similar things in Sherburne as well. So it's not just a Dover thing. It's actually all districts in the area. You, you can't really budget out-of-district because if you think about it, we finalize our budget in March and we know how much students change over time and how things sort of just pop up. So that's an area where you sort of, how do you formulate your budget to protect yourself? Well, I think you've heard me say Dover gets about a million dollars annually for circuit breaker. They actually act like you're not going to get that million dollars. So you're fully funded in your budget for out-of-district because we don't net it down, our potential reimbursement. So I, this is a high number and it could change.
The entire amount.
It is, exactly. But it allows us then not to have to go back and ask the town for money.
Got it.
Otherwise, if we did not have that safety net, we'd be in a position to have to go ask the town for additional appropriations because our budget would imbalance.
That's what happens in our neighbor town. We have to ask for more money in Sherburne.
That can't even.
Pre-budget. For a second year in a row. So, I mean, some, so it is a benefit. I haven't, this, like I said, this is the first time in, in all the years that I've been sort of in school committee or in this position where I've seen us go that high. It's not uncommon for us to be the four hundred, five hundred thousand. But this getting so close to total circuit breaker actually is a little eye-opening for me. I do think that the, the change in placements is a, a lot of that is potentially a one-year phenomenon. So that I think that some of those students that are in that population are going to be aging out. So that we'll see some relief from that. And then think about it, we will also then get the circuit breaker the following year on all of this, which will give you another increase in circuit breaker. So it comes back to you, it's just the timing of what it, it comes back. But so we will keep our eye on it, but right now we do have the funding to cover it. We are still waiting the final circuit breaker details to see where we land. We're always usually conservative when we say we're going to get a million, maybe we'll get a million too, right? So we won't be that close. We don't ever take into consideration at this point, the reimbursement for transportation because case in point, last year they reimbursed us on transportation costs at seventy-five percent. This year was at fifty-seven. So transportation reimbursement.
A mistake?
No, yeah, exactly, right? Comes down to how much money they have left to allocate to transportation. The only good thing about having transportation costs included now is that we're always guaranteed at this point to get the seventy-five percent mandated rate for tuition. And that wasn't always the case. So I think now that tuition is baked into the formula, we'll never have to question the seventy-five percent. Well, I'm not going to say never. For a while, we should never have to worry about the seventy-five percent not coming through. It's just what's going to happen to transportation. And again, they don't know when they set the state budget, how much cost is going to be submitted for reimbursement. So it's, it's constantly this game of not knowing and seeing what you have left. So we, by the next time we meet, we will, we will know circuit breaker. I'll be able to tell you sort of how close we are. And hopefully we'll have some more positive news on some changes, maybe that will have taken place.
What I like though, what I'm hearing is we're meeting the needs of our students when they need it and we'll figure out the, the funding.
Oh, absolutely.
Which is, is, is really amazing.
Right. You could never, you could never really not do what you need to do for our students though, from an out-of-district perspective. It's up to districts to, so part of the circuit breaker reimbursement is also extraordinary relief. So if this had happened to a town that had smaller numbers, then you can ask for additional reimbursement. That reimbursement you get in the current year.
Okay.
So that would definitely help districts.
Got it.
If they really had a big funding issue. So.
Thank you.
And we have had, I think, once since I've been here, we actually qualified for extraordinary relief. We're going to see if we, if our, if our formula would work out to qualify for some extraordinary relief this year, but.
And when do you find the circuit breaker numbers out?
It has been posted. We're just waiting for the detail because it is buried. So the way it works is that Dover and Sherburne each cover all of their placements from age three to twenty-two. And they duly are due that circuit breaker. But the way the Department of Ed looks at us, any student that's age sixth grade up to twenty-two, the circuit breaker, we get all co-mingled at the region. Then we have to take the list by student, break it out and then cut checks back to Dover and Sherburne. So I don't have the detail yet to really be able to, to make that and to figure out, yeah. But we're pretty close to the million. I'd estimate like a million one excluding transportation. So the transportation is always a little bonus for us. So we'll see where that falls once those, those are finally published. The money has been deposited, but the detail behind us, again, where you need, having to go and split it out, hasn't been posted yet.
Understood.
Yeah. So any questions on any of that? And on the back then, well, that, actually I put everything in my report. But if the next thing, do you want to talk about, maybe it's, do you want to do the guidance, budget guidance? Or the capital report or the capital plan?
We can do the budget guidance. That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So the next item would be the budget guidance. And really, it's just asking if anybody has any guidance or wishes to put forward to be considered when putting together next year's budget. So an example was during the time, like COVID, post-COVID, we said we really wanted to focus on social emotional learning. We please consider that in the next budget. If anybody has any suggestions or wishes now, that's great. And if not, if something comes up, you can always bring it forward.
Because believe it or not, you're going to actually get version one point O of your fiscal year twenty-five budget in November.
Wow, yeah.
And so that's why we're asking now forever, so we hold your peace. But so we, we do that, so the timeline is you'll see your first version in November because we are required to submit our one point O drafts to the towns by the end of the year. Actually, it's like December fourteenth. And so we get it out there for you so we can give it to the town, so they can start building the town budget. And then we have though until January, we have January, February, March to continue to discuss things that are happening, alter the budget. As you know, Denny's got a lot of things, we're sort of juggling in the air. So where does that land as far as the impact on twenty-fives? We have until your March meeting to make some of those final decisions. I mean, at the March meeting is where we'll have our open budget hearing. So we'll do a formal presentation of the budget and that's the meeting in which you'll vote your final budget. And then from there, it goes on to the town process. The town will have an open hearing, then the town will have their annual meeting.
Well, if it's a wish list.
So the town of Dover usually says they'll do level services. So whatever services we have right now, whatever it costs to continue that, they'll support. And then we'll use a strategic plan to decide, you know, where we need to either add or, or shift finances. But if anything comes up around social emotional learning, or if you were really concerned about class sizes and you said we really want to lower those.
I would just want to make sure that we're taking, taking a look at, making sure that we're supporting our teachers. It was a very tumultuous year and administrators, it was a very tumultuous year. I, I, I see the social political challenges continuing on. And, and we owe it to our teachers to give them the support that they need to address whatever additional challenges they're going to be facing. So if you're going to consider something, that would be something I strongly recommend.
Do they note it?
To piggyback on that, I know that they've, in Chicaring, they've changed the, or they've highlighted the protocol for teacher gifts and support through the class parents and what, what we're able, what, what parents are able to donate to teachers. And, you know, I don't know how reliant teachers were or are on those gifts, but it was certainly a nice added bonus for teachers, I think, to receive gifts in prior years from families. If there is a way to create that type of support for teachers through an additional funding stream or source, I don't know what that would be, but the amount now is not significant, I think, for teachers and EAs and different types of support staff in the school that they are able to receive through those types of funds.
Well, I think we're fortunate with your PTO that they both have the, the two hundred and fifty dollars per year per specials. Specialist or rate that is free for them to use. And then their grant process.
Right.
In addition, is a great way. So I think if there were ever any needs, my guess is, is that they would be willing to do like a second grant cycle.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But that's another. But that's another way that we, you could sort of fill some of those wish lists of the educators without having it be direct donations through parents, but through the other avenue, right? That is more appropriate for municipal employees. So that's the issue.
And historically, I mean, when I was the PTO president, historically we haven't had as many of the grant applications as we maybe would have wanted to. And some funds were left on the table. So I think again, that's getting the teachers aware of it's there. And you know, honestly, given the space and the time to get, think about it, their, their days are packed with
Right, yeah.
day-to-day tasks. And when you're looking at grant applications, you have to take some time away and think about it strategically. And not everyone has the luxury of doing that, so.
A hundred percent, yeah.
There's also the difference between personal gifts, which is where you.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can give whatever you want to the classroom, you just can't give it directly, you know.
Yeah.
A spa gift card has to get the $50.
Those are really good suggestions. I know the PTO is working on it, but it was, I think, significant change for some.
So yeah, so we'll have your, so we'll deliver actually before the meeting sort of your budget book. So you'll have time to look at it before the first, when we meet in November and then live with that for a couple of months. And we'll be here to answer any questions and it'll be an ever, it's an evolving process. So what we roll out the first is our best, our best version of things that we know in November, knowing that we've got several months to sort of get us to the final, to final resting, the final place where we are.
And as a new person, are we going to get a physical book or is it all?
Nope, you'll get, we'll deliver it to your house.
Numbers are much better on the paper.
Yeah, no, no. And there's actually big sheets and it's, it's a line item. Yeah, it's a budget detailed by line item.
My eyes appreciate that, thank you.
And we usually start kind of with the, the big picture, you know, everything we can anticipate and then cut back.
Understood, yeah.
So the town's can plan for worst case scenario.
Got it, yeah. Okay, so next would be the capital plan, right?
Right, so the town of Dover actually starts their capital planning on the early side. So we're already, I always tell them that they're going to be a week or two late for us because we always wait till your October meeting. But they have already solicited all the other town departments for their requests for fiscal year 25. So included in your packet is the draft of what, where we are. With me for, yes, fiscal year 25. So the only item we, that we are asking for right now, and it's still up for discussion about pushing it out a little bit, is the finishing, the replacement of the classrooms by wing. So we've done the K1, we've done 2, 3, so we have four or five upstairs is the last wing of classrooms to do. That particular classroom wing, we actually aren't seeing any cracks or lifting of tiles at this point. So we're going to take another look at that and then we can then collaboratively work with the town based on other department needs to say if it helps you, we can move that out a year. Or if it helps you in smoothing out your capital request, we can also take care of it for next year. So we're leaving ourselves some flexibility to work with them. And I think they appreciate that collaboration because they may have other departments that have more emergent needs that need to be fulfilled and only have this much money. So that's one of those that we are, could contemplate moving to 26. We continue to have the placeholder for the roof coverings that we keep from year to year pushing out. It started on the capital plan when it hit its 20 years. As you know, some roof, the roof of a, the life of a roof can last up to like 30. We're not in any situation now where we'd want to touch it because we don't have any issues. And so we keep it there as a placeholder. So we've pushed it out another year. We'll continue to take this year and just assess it. But I would not be surprised if you can continue to see that getting pushed out for another couple of years because we really have had no issues. And if you have good quality construction, which I think we did at Chicreen, it should last much longer than the 20 years that our capital plan tells us.
If we do a roof replacement, have we ever thought about coming up with some solar?
Yeah.
Solar, I mean, that's, that mean, you don't, you don't do it out of order, right? You, you do it in conjunction.
Exactly, exactly. So no, it's always something that we contemplate. We've contemplated here, we actually did a major roof restoration here last summer. The rooftops here were not really good candidates.
Yeah.
Because the amount of equipment that's on top of it. Chicreen's got two different kinds of rooftops. You've got the, the shingles, that's sort of, you know, more of a slant. And then we've got the rooftop up, up at the main part of the building, that's like sort of that membrane. And it's got some, not tons of equipment on it. But we would definitely work in concert with the green community, with the town of Dover to see if we are a candidate for. When we looked at it before, it's the trees over there too, that were a little bit a hindrance to us sort of being there. So there's a lot of things.
It doesn't what direction the roofs are oriented in.
Right, right. So one thing that we had initially talked about, and it still wasn't a perfect candidate for us doing more of the carport solar over in the park.
Oh, right, sure.
Yeah, but again, the trees there.
Still.
It wasn't the best. So that is more of a shaded area with lots of trees around it. So it might not be one of a great candidate for solar. But believe me, if we didn't consider it, the town of Dover would want us to consider it.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that it's part of the dialogue. And thank you for bringing me up to speed on that.
Yeah, the capital committee is very sustainability focused and they are, you'll read about it, both Dover and Sherburne are both green communities. So that's a town, I mean, a state funded grant opportunities that if you are sustainable and make good choices, they'll help you fund projects.
Fantastic, okay, great.
So and the other thing that we're pushing off just a year are the rooftop replacements of our main AC units there. So there are parts of Chicreen that were air conditioned from the day it was constructed. And that's sort of like the main office, the library, the computer room. So we do have some, you know, larger air conditioning units there that are coming due for replacement. One thing that we had talked about when we did the retrofit of the air conditioning for the classrooms was incorporating when we replace some of these bigger units for the cafeteria. Because cafeteria is not air conditioned. And so by pushing this off a year and we don't have any maintenance issues with these units, it gives us time to do a little research and have an engineering consultant give us the possibility of increasing the size of one of those to be able to actually service the cafeteria. And that was our plan way back when, you know, because that, the school committee at the time is like, oh, we want to air condition the cafeteria too. Well, it didn't make sense with sort of how we were doing the classrooms, but it made more sense to look at when we went to replace some of those larger units to see if we could.
Makes a lot of sense.
Fill that into. So we'll, we'll do some, spend some time doing that.
Is the gym?
No, but you don't typically air condition gyms. Yeah, none of our gyms here are air conditioned.
Do we still have the high HEPA filter?
Uh, the, yeah, yeah, 13s, yeah. And those are still, still being used. Yep, MERV. I almost forgot that. I knew it was 13, but I'm like, what's the?
Don't lose it, Dawn, you got to keep it.
MERV 13s, no.
13, 13.
No, we, we have not moved, moved off of, of any equipment that would have capacity for MERV 13s. We do use MERV 13s, yeah.
That's awesome.
And so then you see 27, 28 actually are small, 29 is really nothing. And just for the new members, we have a 20-year capital, long-range capital plan that's sort of our roadmap. So we had experts out here and they evaluate everything and then tell you. So based on that estimated useful life, this is when you should potentially look to replace it. So we pull those items from the report, put them on here. And then on an annual basis, if they're, if, if they're not because they're useful life and they're, and how well they're working, we could push it off, but it keeps it on our radar.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so that's, that's how this plan works.
Dare I ask the update on the surface for the playground? Did we, did we, did it get replaced or is it getting replaced? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't been able to sense, I know that was a big issue.
Oh, yeah, no, that happened three years ago.
Okay, good to know.
Yep, no, a whole brand new surface. Actually, it might have been four, yeah, three or four years ago.
Okay, that's great, I'm really out of date.
Yeah.
My daughter, my daughter's out of the age range.
I was like, oh my gosh, we just did it, yeah.
No, no, I couldn't remember.
We all over, yeah, no, it's, it's done.
That's great.
Yeah, and so that was a collaborative project between, actually the building fund that the school committee oversees, our operating fund and the PTO.
Okay, so the PTO did it.
Yep, yep, they gave like 5,000 if I remember. So we pulled it together and it was done a couple, yeah, I wouldn't say four years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so hopefully go over and see it before it doesn't look good anymore.
I probably have seen it.
So tonight I'm asking you to approve this version so that we can pass it along to the capital committee, the town of Dover. And then if, as changes, as we meet with them and there's any changes, obviously the biggest one will just be whether or not we're going to do the classroom floors. We will bring back an additional version for you to sign, to approve. Or this could be where we stand and we won't have to do anything. I, I could envision seeing the number change because we have to go and get our quote updated.
That's what I was going to ask, like, wasn't there something funny, wasn't the last time a little more expensive?
The price did go up, exactly, yeah, market had driven up the price, but I had increased a little bit.
Multiple years, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're, we purchased this particular flooring off a state contract. So as long as that stays, we, but it, we got, we approved it and then we knew that the next year the state contract was going to change and a price increase was built into that. Yeah, the issue we had last year was the supply chain. So that's another, the sooner we know, right, then the earlier we can order. And then it does take a good chunk of time. If you think about emptying all those classrooms out and replacing all the floors and then putting it all back, that's why I wouldn't be too upset if we sort of push this off just to give our custodial staff a summer without all that extra work. Because it is, it is, it's an overwhelming amount of work. And if you walked in the lobby during any of this, you couldn't really walk in the lobby because that's where everything was. But we will be very physically responsible. So if the floors aren't ready to be replaced, we'll prolong that and to, to get more use of what we've already paid for.
Okay, right, thank you.
Okay, so may I get a motion to approve the capital plan? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries with unanimous consent.
Thank you.
So our next, thanks Dawn for all of that. Very clear to work, like, as always, it's easy to follow because of how he presented, so thank you. Okay, next are our consent items, which in your packet, we all had the minutes from the last meeting. Hopefully you had a chance to look it over. And I'm wondering, does anybody have any changes that you would like to make? Okay, so. Before you go on to ask for a motion, in my other board capacities, if you, member wasn't present for the meeting, they abstained.
Right.
So I don't know what you all do here.
Yeah, I think.
We do either way.
Okay, great.
Yeah, no, we'll, I mean, I've, I've been where, like, our attorney's been here and they say it's fine to go ahead and vote, yeah.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve our consent?
So Jesse will approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries with unanimous consent. Okay, and then finally, you have in your packet a number of things. There was the dev's principals report, the MCAS results and some details on that. And then there are also the minutes from the regional and the Sherburne School Committee meetings, their minutes. Those are just there for you to review. And I believe, I just, we also wanted to check if anybody has any items that they would like to see be addressed on the next school committee agenda. And if you don't have any now, as always, you can send them along. I think Jeff had reached out to me and asked if we could maybe talk about the school buses and an ability, like, some districts have the ability for parents to like track that where their buses are on the route. He was hoping maybe we could talk about that a little bit. There are some, maybe a couple of routes that aren't as predictable. I, I don't personally know exactly what it is, but that was what he was mentioning.
Yeah, we could, we could explore that. That comes up every once in a while and typically we have opted not to do that. The other issue is that it typically needs to be done when we're negotiating the contract because it's not in our contract right now for our bus provider to offer us that service. So I do know that we talked with them, now let's say we're in our fourth year. Like four years ago, when we negotiated, just to inquire about it. I think one of the problems is it, it's not really a safety thing here, it's probably more of a convenience.
Yes.
And it becomes like almost another administrative task if we have it. Because people, when they, they can track the buses and when they have questions, it's, there's more calls that come in. So that was some of the things they alerted us about in other districts where they potentially use it. And then there is a small cost obviously to our bus contract if we added it in. So things that, so we are in our fourth year of our fifth, five-year contract. So next year we'll go out to bid and that's when we can sort of maybe explore that where there's nothing we can really do about that right now. But I'd better, I'd like to better understand what their concerns are.
Yeah, I think Jeff knows more clearly. It sounds like it, it would be for certain routes that maybe don't have, like, I might be misspeaking, but some bus routes you get picked, most kids get picked up and dropped off maybe at their personal home, at their driveway, whereas some routes have a collection spot.
Is that all elementary? So our protocols is that what we normally do, kindergartners get picked up at their driveway. And then other than that, we do do, we do collapse. It's not door to door. So there are designated, I mean, and for elementary, we don't have them walk too far. It might be like you've got a house here and the neighbors around here are going here. So I don't think we have long distances for any of the elementary. When you get to the region, obviously we do.
Yeah, so maybe it's a conversation that can we, recommended to go up to the joint committees meeting?
If it's, if it's, if it's the region, more of his older.
Yeah, I'll get more detail on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And one, one other question for you is, you know, I'd be interested in, in if, I'll leave it to your judgment to see whether it's necessary or not, but obviously there's a lot of conflict going on in the Middle East right now. And you've got folks that are deeply tied on both sides of the equation, right? And making sure that we're addressing the emotional wellbeing of our kids through this period of time, particularly where unfortunately there have been outside actors who have made threats that we have to take seriously. And so just wondering whether or not we ought to, at least at the regional level, make sure that, you know, we're providing everyone the support that they need and, and we're keeping that in, in mind.
Yeah, yeah, it continues to be a conversation. I check in with the principals every Thursday morning and we continue to talk about, you know, how we're meeting the needs of all of the kids, you know, regardless of their background or affiliation. So it's certainly something on the principals and the guidance counselor's radar, K to 12.
Great, if anything else comes up that you want to talk about the next meeting, feel free to reach out.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, well, that was our agenda for tonight. We are ready to adjourn. May we adjourn by unanimous consent? Okay, thank you everyone.